This one is on holiday in Utah.
We're okay, we have four more.
One minute, two?
Yeah, it's thirty seconds. Wait half a second or half a minute.
I don't know, then I'm thirty seconds behind time. So what is this exactly?
Well, that thing doesn't have a second hand on it. So it's about halfway between.
Okay, well, there we go.
Oh, Councilmember Barbas is here. They were just saying you weren't going to be here.
I did say that.
I didn't say that.
There's a ventral twist in the room. Good to see you. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. I'm sure Councilman B. Boy will be along shortly. If he's away, that's what I heard. Okay. All right, so, okay, good. Welcome here and welcome the press here and Sergeant Semenek, glad to have you here. And everybody else, Marion and Jill and Jeff when he comes back. We'll start by having an opening prayer by Councilmember Bangery, please.
Our Father in Heaven, as we meet as council and visiting members, we ask that Thy Spirit will be with us and lead us and guide us and direct us in the affairs of this community. The decisions we make will be for the benefit of the community and not for ourselves. In these things we ask and pray for in the name of Thy Son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, you have the agenda before you. Anything, any additions to the agenda that we need to put on there? Okay. Is my mic on? Is it on now? Okay. All right, so once again, you have your agenda before you. You've had a chance to take a look at it. Are there any additions? If not, I'll tell somebody to adopt the agenda.
Counselor Creed, adopt the minutes? Agenda.
The agenda, I mean, yeah. All favor? Thank you. You have a chance to take a look at the minutes? On just a moment, to have a quick look or you're okay? Okay. If everybody's okay with the minutes, then I'd like somebody to adopt the minutes. Mayor Fohn, thank you. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there any business arising from the minutes report? Okay. Let's move right on to the delegations then. Sergeant Semenek?
Floor is yours.
All right, let me have our third quarter stats for you. Believe it was all sent in ahead of time. Just go through them. So in the third quarter, prison offenses, we had twenty-six. Property offenses, eighty-six. Other criminal code, seventy-eight. Drug related occurrences, three. Federal statutes, one. Provincial statutes, minus traffic, three hundred and three. Provincial traffic, fifty-one. Criminal traffic, four. Eight. It's a good thing.
I think our traffic services and the sheriff made up for the other part probably in the third quarter. Our traffic service unit was in a few times in the last month or two, primarily looking at the speed zones in the schools, now the school is vacuumed, and then also on highways as well.
Can I just ask you something, Sergeant Semenek? As you know, we have part of our plan, a desire to see property offenses looked after for safety in a town. I know that in the summertime, we normally have a little bit of a spike, but when it's reported that way, those are complaints of citizens, but it doesn't really tell us if there is any conviction that has occurred. Can you maybe address that for us?
Sure. I do, I can break that down for you based on the intake of complaints with the suburb illegally per se. It's not on the sheet here when we have our discussion downstairs. We can address that then, if that would be so.
Sure. It could be something interesting for us. Thank you. Because I understand that sometime there are convictions if there is property offense against businesses, for example, but I also understand, having spoken to your superior, that the issue that seems to be problematic for us all is that if you have a case, I go to court, but if you don't have anybody that come testify or witness the crime, that person really, in fact, gets out scot-free.
Yeah, it does happen. Like, we talked a bit about that, the cause of disturbance. I think, yeah, you have to have someone to provide a statement and who's willing to testify in order for the ground to get convictions on these property offenses.
Right. And so, can you just tell me, is that something that you pursue with the Chamber of Commerce? Helping them understand that concept or how do we help them understand that?
Yeah, that's a good way to do it, is to, yeah, go to a Chamber of Commerce meeting. Yeah, I was invited absolutely and explain that process to them. Because, yeah, that does actually probably, except for calling in new complaints and us exploring.
Right. Because for us to see those numbers go down and to see conviction go up, that'll never happen if we don't kind of work together.
That's correct.
Right? Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Bangery?
Sergeant, in the second quarter, in the drugs offenses, there was nine, and in the third quarter, there's three. Now, is this illicit drugs or is this prescription?
It's both.
Both?
Yeah.
And in prescription drugs, what does that curtail?
Selling your prescriptions.
Okay.
Which is the offense under the article.
All right.
And the ones from this quarter are actually illicit drugs.
Illicit?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other, anybody else have a question? Counselor Creed, Sergeant?
I just had some discussions with some people from time to time, and we wondered how our community compares, you know, we see Carstens and how it compares with itself. I'm wondering how we compare in these categories with, you know, surrounding communities like Fort McCloud or Pincher Creek.
Right off, and I don't know, that's what I have a issue with, we have with the county Phil Screen. I don't know if that's something I can engage you, it's not hard.
I just wondered at some future time if you could just kind of get a little comparison of the, you know, the surrounding communities that, you know, to the north of us, west of us, and maybe east of us as well.
Sure.
See if there's a trend or something.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else got a question? Okay. Well, okay, that's it. Thank you. We appreciate it very much. Okay. We have one more delegation that will be coming at 4:30. So while we're waiting, let's move right along here. We don't have a lot of the agenda today. We can maybe go over the strategic plan if there's any questions you have on the strategic plan, if you had a chance to read that over, any questions regarding that?
Well, I think Marion updated us when we had our budget review. And helped us understand how the plan and the budget kind of worked hand in hand and how the budget was designed to support the strategic plan. And I think that was a very good, a very good piece of information and is satisfied, satisfies what we're trying to do for this term, so I think that was good.
Counselor Bangery?
We got any update on the bureau funding for the bureau that Graham is working on?
There has been some grants applied for, but it is part of the 2015 budget process. So nothing further than that, other than at our next budget meeting, council will determine if that's one of the projects they want to move forward with.
Thank you. Counselor?
I noticed we run the list for assistance for flood recovery?
Yes, we are. I'll speak to that here next on the agenda.
Okay. Counselor, Marion?
I question, I question one thing on this. Review the Fay Ray Fountain, location and the condition of it. Counselor Creed brought up the condition of it, it was leaking. But I question the location. Are we considering relocating that fountain off of Main Street?
Want me to talk about that?
Yeah, somebody please do.
I, I think the first item of business, if we keep it where it is, my point of view is let's upgrade that fountain and give it back its pristine look. What is interesting about the location as it is, is near the path, near the river. And if people go near the river, they see that fountain and it becomes a little bit of a point of interest. Now, to move it, we at time, last council discussed that possibility, we were thinking of moving it near the museum. I'm not so sure why we chose to forget that site altogether. But it depends what we want it for. If it's a focal point for the people walk from the campground to the town, then it's not a bad place where it is.
Through the summer, I drove by there a number, number of times, and I always see tourists taking pictures of the, of the sign in combination with the, with the fountain itself. I'd like the idea of what they did with the flowers on top of it. My concern is the parking, you know? If we could get some, some kind of a different arrangement for parking close to that sign where people don't have to park across the street in the restaurant and then walk across to take a picture of the sign. And I'm just wondering if we need a crosswalk there? Can we put a crosswalk there?
I think the school division parking lot is available. I mean, that was, that was part of the condition that the town gave when they, when they allowed the school to put in that it would, that it would be open for, for public parking, you know, at times, so. Other than the entrance to it isn't well marked, the entrance to that parking lot, if that one is available. Maybe we need better signage for that, you know, for people to use that parking lot there.
I will say that I agree with this. Last year, I saw more people there this summer than I have any previous summer before. So whether it was the flowers or what it was that was making it stand out more so people knew it was there. But my understanding is that based on the conversations we've had with transportation, with our crosswalks, blocks and lights, there's about a zero percent chance of putting a crosswalk there.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we couldn't do something with the sign to enhance that so they could see the gorilla, you know, in the background of that sign. I don't know. I don't know, Counselor Creed, what to do, but, you know, when you, when you come down the Main Street and you look at the sign, you really can't depict what it is. You know, it's King Kongs down there holding her. And I'm not wondering if we could do something with that sign, if the communities have been looked at that?
I guess we could look at and make recommendations. Right now, it's facing north and south of the real sign.
Yeah.
Marion?
Mr. Chairman, the discussion at the strategic planning session was to have administration look at upgrades to that, including the signage, so that is in progress. So, you know, we'll bring back any recommendations that are determined from that.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Just one thing on here that I was wondering about was the social media luncheon that was held today.
Was excellent. I, Councilor Barbas and I were there. It's, I would call it a social, social media one-on-one, in a sense that it was there to make everybody aware of the different tools that are available for, if you are a small business, to improve your ability to bring in customers to your business through the social media and through referral between businesses, how one business can piggyback on the other one. And they gave us the example of the movie mill in Lesbridge who teamed up with N-Mark to promote their own business by offering a contest, and the prize was tickets to an event at N-Mark's. And so, there were some very interesting things. What they told us is that if you hope to use the social media to, to attract your local population, maybe that is not really the proper use of social media, but it is meant to attract people who need to come to know of your business and come to your business. And so, I thought that was an interesting, I never thought of social media not being as useful in a small community to attract the locals. It was really meant to attract people outside the community to your business. Maybe you want to elaborate more?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've worked with Eric and in the process of working with him on a couple of other projects. There are, when he said that, I don't think he was trying to discourage people from using it on a local basis. But it just has a, if you have a bigger population, it has more of a draw. So it has been used quite effectively by some people in town, and so it is, it is an effective tool. It works really, really well for tourism because you're drawing people to the community from a very broad base. But for, for other businesses, it takes a much more focused, deliberate plan. I think that was the big thing that I got out of it, was besides all the list of the things that you shouldn't be doing, there was a fairly, fairly, very good list of that, was that you really need to start out with a plan and
A goal in mind.
And a goal in mind, what your objective is that you're trying to accomplish with it. And more business doesn't count as a goal. It needs to be much more specific and targeted.
So I think it was very good. I think
Like event?
Well, it could be an event, but I mean, even within, within your goal, like how, how many likes you're trying to generate from it and what you're going to do with those likes. You know, using Facebook as an example, what the objective is to do with that. It just needs to be part of your whole overall strategy, not just this little piece that you try for a month or two and if it doesn't work, you quit. That it actually can have a negative impact on you if you do it for a month or two and then quit, because then people think that you're not a business owner. It's got to be a consistent part of your overall strategy.
I've noticed lately on my Facebook, there's been a lot of corporations and businesses that have somehow gotten my Facebook information, and they're sending advertising onto my Facebook site. Some of them are, you know, outside communities wanting you to go to their areas to camp out or to go for, to a resort here and there and, and it's kind of neat. But I draw the line at insurance companies funded by Visa for Insurance, you know, there's a lot of them that are wanting you to buy, buy, buy their products and stuff like that, so.
So it, it isn't somehow they got it? Facebook actually has algorithms built into it based upon what you visit, talk. It targets those ads towards you and they pay a fee for the more targeted that they, that demographic that they're going after, the higher the fee is they pay for that. So that's why you're seeing stuff that
Yeah, didn't see before.
Yeah.
What I appreciated
Just click away.
What I appreciated is that the interest it has created within the group that was there and what Jeff offered for the future might be quite interesting. Maybe Jeff, you want to speak about that a little bit, the follow-ups that you expect to have?
Sure. Eric just said that maybe he could come back in six or eight months after people have kind of dabbled in this a little bit, got a feel for what they want to do, maybe made their own plan. He had them do some exercises throughout the presentation of where they were and what they were doing now. And then we can do a little more advanced luncheons on some specific campaigns, how to do some specific things. So he's offered to, to come back and kind of follow up a little bit more on that as well.
The other presenter, Eric?
Eric Chang and Matt Tamer, I believe.
It's a whole mess last night.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's Tamer. Not Tamer.
They're out of Lesbridge.
Yeah, they're actually, both have Carstens connections. Eric lives in Carstens.
Oh, okay.
But their company is in Lesbridge, yes.
It was very well spoken in a sense that if you knew something, you understood the language. If you understood nothing, you understood the language. So on both counts, I think they were winners.
So how many people came to the event?
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, not counting Graham or I, twenty-four, I think twenty-four, twenty-six, something like that.
That's a, that's a pretty good turnout for one of these. Was it an open invitation or was it? Anybody could come along?
It was directed to businesses.
Good. That's great. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, so we've got a few minutes here before our delegation comes, so we'll move on to our correspondence. So Marion's going to talk to us about the disaster recovery assistance available for Southwest Albers. Thanks, Marion.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, on October 30th, so last Thursday, the province announced the Disaster Recovery Assistance Program. And the town of Carstens is one of the communities that is eligible under the 2014 Disaster Recovery Program. I've been in contact with the individual who is in charge of our file, and I expect by the end of the week, I will have all of the documentation here in order for us to start the process. My hope is that everything that we have claimed will be eligible under the program, but at this point, I can't say that that is the case. How the process works is there's some additional forms that we will now need to fill out, and then their engineer will come down and assess the projects, and the final approval will happen from there. So again, within the next couple, three weeks, I hope to be, at least have their engineer here on the site. But as you can imagine, with just having the announcement of the, of the funding or the program, that they're all very busy trying to meet everyone's needs, there's a number of communities involved. So that's where we're at to date, but we're one step further than we were a week ago, so.
Marion, just as a refresher, when we had that flooding, we had a lot of issues with the creek, the lead creek and the erosion on the bank. So that's part of it. Then we had possible damage to the bridge, we're not so sure if it was
There is no damage.
No damage to the bridge at all. So what else was part of that claim that we had?
Well, we can claim any of our expenses related to the event, so any overtime that we paid out, any meals, any of that kind of thing in response to the event.
Right.
We had, I don't have the file here in front of me, but we had a number of minor costs that would be covered in the program as well. The significant area that we saw damage to though is on a creek bank erosion, and we've had an engineer look at that, so we have those costs.
Right. Okay, thank you. And those are very costly repairs that need to be done, so thank you.
Counselor Bangery?
Marion, during the, during the flood, how's the pumps working out?
Our pumps, our pumps were great.
And we don't, we don't need any more pumps or anything like that?
No, we were able to eliminate any kind of damage to homes from Silverbacka by the quick response of our staff and the ability of our pumps.
That's on Second Avenue, down the bottom of the hill there?
On Third Avenue.
Or Third Avenue, yeah.
Okay. Question?
Marion, I'm concerned, I just, I understand that where this is disaster recovery, I know when we talked, you know, about the Gulf Lords before, they will fix what's been damaged, they won't do anything, you know, to, you know, remediate, you know, or to, to, yeah, mitigate future
Remediate, they won't mitigate.
They won't mitigate, that's what I'm trying to get the right words here. So is that what, what this is basically, is just, this is going to help us?
Yeah, and what we've submitted under that application is for the erosion that happened in the 2014 event. So there could be, and I, like I said, I can't guarantee this, but our hope is that there will be some money available for us to do the remediation. Part of remediation though on a creek bank erosion would be some mitigation, you know, obviously.
Yeah, I was wondering how much overlap and savings can we get? Like, this isn't having necessarily that other program that was on the agenda here a while back, you know, the grants too?
The second program. No, it's a sep, it's a separate program. The other has a grant, this is a disaster recovery.
And there's no way that we can make those work together?
The possibility is there if required, but I, I don't know at this point. My hope is that the disaster recovery will cover all of our costs, because that's a hundred percent coverage, right?
Yeah, that's what we are.
Hundred percent.
So I'm just wondering if it, you know, like, to do one and then, you know, try to do it over again or, you know, to be, you know
It will all be dependent on what their engineer determines from their on-site, that's really what it will boil down to.
Thank you.
But we, just to be clear, we do have some very sound engineering criteria and costs associated with this, so my hope is that that will give us enough evidence to support them funding the entire project.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions here. I was looking at the amount of money that they, the government's allotted, and I look at the number of communities there, and then I see that they're including the city of Madison Hatt and the town of High River in this. My, my thoughts, that, that amount of money would be High River's amount that they would need to
The town of, the town of High River is not included in 2014.
Are you sure? Because it says also included in this DRP are emergency operations incurred by the city of Madison Hatt and the town of High River.
Yeah, emergency operations, but if you look at the, the communities that are eligible under the Disaster Recovery Program for 2014
Just in that list?
They don't have them specifically listed, so the events that happened in 2013 in High River and Madison Hatt would not fall under this program, it's a separate program.
Okay, this is the 2014 only.
But you are correct, there's a number of communities affected and it wasn't just ours. We were lucky enough that we didn't have a significant amount of residents that were affected. Again, I think it was because of the quick response and the management that our staff had of the event that helped to eliminate that from happening. But we've all submitted our costs and somehow we're going to have to try and work through the amount that we can, we'll get as much as we possibly can less.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's wonderful. And I think it's, it's, it's great that we have some engineering backup there to give them the evidence that they need to look at and consider our, our claim. Well, thank you. Any, any questions? Okay, now we'll move on. I see our delegations here. We'd like to, to welcome you. Thank you for, thank you for coming. Glad to have you. We're excited to see you come. We're just about the end of our business anyways.
Excellent.
It's great to have you here. So, okay, so Lyle?
That's me, yes.
Tomi? If you'd like to introduce your people with you, that would be great. Take the front there, front center.
Excellent.
And give us your presentation, and if your people would like to help, if you've got any information that they would like to give to us, we're more than happy to hear.
Sure.
Sure. Okay, so my name's Lyle Tomi, I'm here with a company called Clearport Professional Services. Attending with me is Joe Johnson, one of my partners, and Shane Groves, another one of my partners. Shane also runs a immigration law firm called Peer Law in Calgary. We've been involved in the temporary foreign worker business and the recruitment business for the better part of a decade, mainly bringing people up from Mexico into Canada, skilled workers and others into Mexico. And when my friend invited us to come down here and speak, we thought that it would be a good opportunity to talk to you about the changes that have been made to that program, and how it might impact some people in your community. So I'm going to expect or hope to get some input from you as to exactly what you want me to talk about, that I can, I can certainly answer any questions you would have. The government, you know, I, I'm, I'm the first guy to criticize the government if I can, the federal government, but in this case, I, I'm not going to just push them under the bus. I think that they responded just to a lot of press that they got, mainly about low-skilled workers and mainly in service industries where workers weren't being treated well by their employers. I might argue that it's not an immigration matter, it's more of an employment standards matter. But that said, it did impact some foreign workers, and it did have an impact on the way the program was perceived by the public. When that happened, the, the government decided immediately to put a moratorium on the food services business and their ability to access foreign workers. They promised during that time that they were going to review the program and make some changes, and in the summer, they made some changes. And the changes were significant, and the changes will have a particular impact on employers that, bringing up employees, low-skilled employees, and particularly employees that are being paid less than, in Alberta, $24.23 an hour. So will have a major impact on any employers in, in Cardston and area that have been relying on temporary foreign workers or expecting temporary foreign workers to, to do that business. In response to that, what, what we've done is we've, we've certainly, over the last few years, we've, our business has changed, we've, we're still doing a lot of work out of Mexico, we have offices there, and really enjoy doing work in Mexico, but we also recruit out of other parts of the world, and we've now opened an office in Montreal, one in Toronto, where we can service some of the underserved parts of the country. Particularly, we focus on newcomers to the country who have status here and maybe get stuck in those concrete jungles and can't figure out a way to get out west to where they might be able to make more money, spend a little less money living and doing other things. So the major changes the government made to the program was the access to it, they made it more difficult for employers to access it. The application went from about six pages to 14 pages, and there's lots of little innuendos in there that you, you have to be able to fill out and understand. They did add a fee to it, a user fee, it's really inexplicable, but it's, it's a $1,000 per person fee, really difficult to justify. And if, in any business, if we decided we were just going to change our fees and add a fee to, at a per person basis, I think it's, it's difficult. It's not a restaurant, you're, you're reviewing an application, if it's for 40 people or one person, it shouldn't make a difference. But they did add that, and that made it really, really difficult for smaller employers in particular to access the program, because they're looking at a thousand dollar fee per person, and then a lot more scrutiny. From the workers' point of view, they, they did a little bit of a dirty there as well on, on the low-skilled workers that are here, and then some of the skilled workers in lower wage occupations, a little trickier for them to get residency. And where I'm troubled by it is, is many of them that were already here and going about things the proper way to get residency, the government made that a little trickier. So after they came to Canada on the, on the promise of having an opportunity to gain residency, the government said, nah, we're going to change the rules, and, and they changed the rules. So there are a number of people here now that aren't going to be able to get, or permits renewed, and do the things that they need to do to stay, so you're going to have this, a lot of people leaving, and sadly, they'll leave with a bad feeling about our country. And that, and that, that, that does make me sad. We feel there are some solutions, and then there's some things that can be done. I know you're meeting with your MP, and I, I encourage you to, to talk to him about the changes and get a better understanding. Alberta is a unique economy, there's a lot of stuff happening here, and it, it makes it difficult. I know that, I have a lot of friends that live in Cardston, a lot of family here, and I know that a lot of people leave here, a lot of the farm kids and others, they go north, and they go out there to work. My wife's aunt works up there. So I, I know that a lot of people, a lot of the talent from here goes there because they can make more money. So what it does is it, it leaves you with a bit of a vacuum, because you don't have the workers you need to do some of the work that's needed. So you're going to have to have some strategies in place to find people, you're going to still have to look to foreign workers eventually. In our company, what, what we focus on is we focus on that holistic approach to recruitment. We even met today with, at one of the big resource companies in Calgary, meeting with them about helping the Aboriginals and doing a better job with Aboriginals, and helping them get trained and to help them get into the workforce and become productive members in the workforce. And so we're hoping that, that that'll mature, and we'll be able to do more with that. Also looking into other parts of the country, into, as I said, into the Torontos and Montreals where they're, they are immigration soft spots, and it's a little more difficult for someone to get a job out there. Quick story in that, in that regard, I was in, staying in a hotel in Toronto recently, and the gal there was telling me about her plight, she really enjoys her work, but she's challenged by a one hour and 45 minute bus ride each way to work. So I was thinking about her, and I, I don't know exactly, I didn't get into how much money she made, I asked her lots of other questions, but I don't know that. And if she was living here, it would cost a lot less to get to work, obviously, she wouldn't be investing an hour and a half or, or three hours every day to get to work. And her after-tax dollars would go a little further, you don't have the extra provincial tax added to her wage. So I think there is an opportunity to look to other parts of the country as well, and access some of those groups and maybe see an ad on a job bank or, or some kind of national job posting, and feel like, boy, that's inaccessible, how are we going to get out there? How would we get to Cardston? And that's where I think employers and companies like mine can be a little more responsible, and look at opportunities for them and bridge that gap if you will, getting them out here. With the foreign workers, again, I think it's, it's going to take a lot of due diligence by employers, they have to make sure that they understand the program, and, and they have to make sure that they're, they're dotting all their i's and crossing their t's as they're recruiting foreign workers. So that's our story. Shane, your board, do you want to add anything to that? Or did I?
Um, no, I have a prepared speech, but definitely the impact on employers has been severe in a lot of cases where, you know, they've had, in some cases where it feels like the rugs have been pulled off from being done. So there's been a lot of uncertainty. And so they, they planned based on rules, and a lot of them are following the rules, and, and then the rules have been changed, and they've been changed retroactively. So we've seen situations where just seems, there seems to be some unfair treatment in this regard, but, yeah, I, I can answer a question.
So right now, what is the direction, I, I can think of a couple of businesses here in town that do unique use of foreign workers, and obviously, they're going to have some problems now with that. What is, what do they do?
Well, we don't want a employer that's moving his company to the United States. That's not a solution that we suggest, but...
It's not one we'd like to see either.
But, you know, so it's forcing them, in a way, I mean, not to completely kick the, the government and what they've done, but it's, it's forced employers to, to look closer, force them to look at the minority groups, people who typically aren't looked at seriously, like some Aboriginal groups or others. It forces them to look at other provinces and other pockets of potential labor pools. And in some cases, you literally see them reducing the hours that they're open. So I don't really see it as a very business-friendly regime right now.
Given the unfairness, the apparent unfairness of it, maybe I should say, is there, is there a, a legal process that an individual employer can take to...
Yeah, I mean, you can...
I mean, nobody wants to sue us, I don't care, because that's pretty tricky.
You have to work within, within the parameters that are set. I mean, most employers aren't in a position where they can lobby or, you know, respond to the government collectively, but you have, right now, the, the Law Society, so immigration lawyers across Canada are, are getting together to speak to the government, to speak to the minister, because I just had a call last Friday where, you know, we talked with some other lawyers, and they're seeming across the country where it's, I don't mean to paint such a grim picture, but for, it's a serious issue for a lot of people who have small business and, and relying on this program.
Well, in areas like this, where it's, it's going to be trickier to attract people, and so I think the important part is, is to have that real responsible approach at the front end. So any of these employers, make sure that as they're, as they get, and it should be default, it shouldn't be something they should be just doing immediately is going to foreign workers. They should be exhausting their opportunities to hire Canadians, those underserved groups that we've mentioned. But if they do get to where they are bringing foreign workers in, having a real responsible approach to it. So making sure they understand, if it's a seasonal nature, which I know some of the people around here would use the SOC, which is the Seasonal Agricultural Worker Program, that hasn't been impacted by these changes. So that's important to note right out of the gate, that they, they made sure right away those changes didn't affect SOC, and they didn't affect Quebec. So don't figure. But, but, but it is important that, that employers, if they are recruiting people, some of the smaller businesses, that they recruit with an end in mind. You know, I looked at the list of questions from my brother over here, and, and he, he gave me the questions, and, and all the questions are questions that should have been answered before the people get here. The problem is, they get here and then they start saying, okay, well, how do I get my wife here? How do I get my kids to school here? How do I become permanent here? And I think those are things that you need to do on the front end. We've been doing it for a long time. As I said, mainly out of Mexico, for eight of the 10 years I speak about, we, we brought thousands of people from Mexico here, mainly skilled workers, mainly engineers, truck drivers, welders, mechanics. But when we bring them, there's, there is a strategy in place, and we work with law firms on the front end, so we understand how will they get residency, and we make sure the employer and the, and the worker are on the same mindset. We don't like them coming here, and then within two weeks of arriving, they start asking questions like, okay, what's this tax coming off on my paycheck? What's off, so it's, it's about that clarity, and it's about making people understand how the program works. And I think it's really incumbent on employers to do that now with all the changes. That said, and this is where you need to lobby your MP, we're hoping that it'll be stable now for a while. Anyone can work within the rules, as long as the rules don't keep changing. And, and I think that's going to be really important, the government can keep the rules stable, because if they're going to change them every 15 minutes, we're going to have a problem. Right? I spoke at a conference almost immediately after it, and I likened it, and I can use your highway out here, we drove on, we obeyed the speed limit, for the most part, my nose isn't growing yet. But a lot of people aren't obeying the speed limit on that highway. The answer to that isn't to close the highway now, or to restrict access to the highway, the answer is, is to tick the speed. And, and I think the same would have been a better response to this Temporary Foreign Worker Program, making some tweaks to it, certainly punishing the people that are abusing the workers and, and abusing the program. And, and I think that that was a better approach than, than what they did. But that's, that's a conversation you can have with your MP and C. He's a young guy from Lethbridge Hill, Hills. Mayor, you have a question?
Yes, I appreciate what you're saying, the importance of lobbying with our MP to try to help them understand the impact of the, the changes in the program on our local economy, and it has had an impact. But you're talking about a little bit of a success story with the Mexican foreign worker. You have obviously a model that is working.
Yes.
Is that a model that you are able to work with the government towards something that is more viable as a solution, rather than to have employer try to fill all those forms, and at the end, the worker doesn't really know what they're coming into this country with and for?
Yes, Mayor, I understand your question, and I appreciate it. I think, I think you have to understand that the government, the government's role in this is to, is to create the regulations and other things, and then the employer, and groups like ours, our role is, is to, is to work within those regulations. Working directly with the government on it, you know, yeah, I, I think it could work if, if they were open to that, I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to see how open they are to it. But I think the better approach, certainly for, for businesses around here that will be impacted, is to understand the rules and regulations as clearly as possible, and then work within those regulations, and make sure that everything that they're doing is, is done responsibly.
Thank you. But you're right, the changes have affected the way we do business around here.
Oh, yes, and it's, in everywhere, to be honest. The, the big, the big companies that, you know, that need welders and mechanics and some of these big, the big positions up north, I'm, I'm not saying they don't bat an eye, but they, they need 100 people, they got to write a check for $100,000 that they never used to have to pay. But when you start talking about smaller employers, and they start looking at, at having to pay these extra fees, and I'm really, I'm really disappointed in that, but I'm more disappointed in the workers and some of the people that have come here, because we are a country of immigrants, and, and you likely of all, you're all familiar with genealogy here, so I'm sure you've traced it all back, and most of you can go back somewhere other than Canada. So, so the fact is, is that we are a country built on immigration, and if we're going to stay strong and, and true and free and all those good things, we're going to need to keep being a country that's a welcome spot for immigrants. And I don't like when I see us changing the rules mid-game, like, like that, that makes me nervous.
Thank you.
Counselor Bemri?
I want to just change courses just a little bit.
Sure.
I witnessed something last week which really aggravated and disgusted me, but at the same token, I can understand what's happening.
The temporary foreign workers are bringing foreign workers into our, into the country, which is excellent idea, putting them into the food service industry.
They're putting them on frontline in the industry, exposing them out there where their language, their English, the way they pronounce words and so forth, is not very clear. And I'm sitting in a, in a drive-in lineup, and the guy behind me got so upset that he was verbally abusive to the whole thing, backed out over the curb and everything because he could not understand the, the foreign worker who was trying to take his order. And so is there any protection to these foreign workers that the industry can take by, by not exposing them to this, these kinds of situations? And I mean, it, it is an actual exposure to, you know, how do they adapt? Are they going to get discouraged?
It's all, again, it's about responsible recruiting, and it's about, it's about responsible settlement and jobs when they get there. I, I will comment on that, my daughter worked at Dairy Queen last year in Calgary, she born and raised here, and some of that might be the technology between the, because she had some people stomping mad at her too, for some reason. I, I think that that might be another problem we need to address in our society, other than foreign workers. But no, to, to your point, I think, to answer your question, I think, I think the key is, is again, is that responsible recruitment. Employers need to make sure they're recruiting responsibly and, and not putting people in situations where they will, you know, they, they're not going to succeed or do well and make it comfortable. So, you know, service industry's struggled, and, and you know, I'm not going to just say it's bad, because the, the challenge of the food service industry is it's a low-paying opportunity. But I think there are solutions to that, I think if we, if we can use the food service industry as a stepping stone to other opportunities within the country, I think it's, it can work out well. But yeah, I, I, that comes down again to recruitment, that recruitment piece, and making sure that there's responsible recruitment, and making sure that that employee fits the job that they're in. No blind dates, with anything we ever do, we, we insist that the employer actually not only use Skype and other technology to interview the person, to actually have some face-to-face time with the person to make sure they can do the job. I don't believe in a non-skilled job, there's no such thing. There's low-skilled jobs, there's jobs that require less skills than others, but there's no such thing as a non-skilled job. Every job requires some skill, even that town council.
Amen to that.
Counselor Remens?
Most of these people that are coming here don't want to be temporary workers, they want to be permanent residents.
Correct.
Now, is there any way around getting that to qualify? Like, Canada's always been screaming for skilled workers.
Absolutely.
And there's lots of them out there, but the only way they can get in here is being a temporary worker.
Correct.
And that sort of defeats the whole thing, because they got three strikes against them before they even start.
Yes and no, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure. There are streams available to, to temporary foreign workers, the, the problem is, is that with low-skilled workers, there aren't really streams available. So, so it's difficult for a low-skilled worker on that merit to, to gain residency from a low-skilled job. A skilled worker, a person in a skilled position, like if I brought a service technician in for your dealership here, and we do that, we do a lot of that kind of stuff, and if I brought a service technician in for your dealership here, that person would come in immediately, and after a year of working, they could apply under, currently, the candidate experience class, and apply for residency. But you want to make sure they qualify, so some of their, their English needs to be at a certain level and other things before they come here, and you want to make sure they have a high school diploma in some cases and other things. What, what can end up happening is the worker gets here, and then they start asking those questions, and then we figure out, oh, wait a minute, they don't have the credentials anyways to, to apply for residency. But further to your point, I think it's critical that, that when we're recruiting now, especially recruiting now, especially as we're bringing foreign workers in, that we know the rules of the game before they come, and everyone understands their intention. There are some situations here, and you can hear with the SOC, for example, the seasonal, that's an acronym for Seasonal Agricultural Worker Programme. When those workers come, they do come in seasonal, and that's a temporary thing, and it's known by both parties that they're coming in and they're working temporarily, helping with harvest or what have you, and then they go home. But there are a lot of positions where the workers do want to come and they want to establish residency. And we have to make it easy for them, or at least we've got to make it clear for them how it works. And the saddest part there is it takes forever. The process in times can just be outrageous.
Like, my daughter has a nanny that they hired.
Yes.
And the government keeps changing the rules all the time. And so she's been here now probably for about seven years, but still can't qualify, because all of a sudden, like she came over here as working in a pet store.
Yeah.
And then she had a job as a nanny, and it's gone on from there. But she thought she had all the years in that she needed, and all of a sudden, the government says, no, no, you didn't fill out this form. And so now she has to start all over again. And I think a lot of that problem is the government, that they don't explain, or the employee doesn't explain when they come, that this is what you're going to have to do, and this is all the paperwork you're going to have to do.
Yeah, so what we'll generally do to counter that is we'll make sure at the front end that the employee understands that the process and the costs associated with it. Because we often recommend that they use a lawyer. Obviously, I have a partner who's a lawyer, so we can send them that way. But we really do recommend that they use a lawyer, because as you indicate, there are a lot of forms, there's a lot of things to be filled out. It's not to say someone can't do it on their own. You can do your taxes on your own. But, you know, quite often, it makes sense to hire someone to do it that does it all the time, and understands the process, and can be accountable for all of that paperwork. Your nanny, daughter's nanny, nanny, she might be wise to, you know, find some representation to make sure, if that's what really happened, is that it was just a form that was, because you want to make sure those forms are filled out properly, and that everything's in order when you're sending those applications in, because you're paying a lot of fees. The fees aren't something you just laugh at either. It's a lot of money, and more importantly, it's that person's livelihood that's at stake. And you don't want the person to end up being told, okay, well, you exhausted all your avenues, you have to go home now, and then your daughter's children are going to miss their nanny.
Right. Well, like what she found, now she has to have X number of dollars in the bank, which they didn't tell her initially, so what she's been doing is sending the money home to her family. So, you know, it's these little things that make it very hard.
Yeah, they kind of, yeah, it is tricky. But again, I think that communication clarity on the front end, that's why we call our company Queer Work, because we like everything to be clear from all ends, right?
Yeah. They finally got an immigration lawyer, and it's a little simpler now. Nobody told them that they would have to do that in the first place.
Okay, good. Elder Mayberry?
Well, we're having a meeting with our MP, Mr. Hellyer. What do you suggest we ask him? What do you suggest that we look at to deliver to him?
I would say, yeah, you actually mentioned your name.
That's all right.
I've been surprised, looking at comments on articles after the article on the immigration programme, how negative the comments can be. And so I think as politicians, they're kind of responsible to their electorate, and they need to listen to them. If they only hear from Canadians and employers that, you know, we don't like temporary foreign workers in our country, well, they're going to respond accordingly. And so I think they just need to hear the other side of it. And for whatever reason, you know, employers who are busy running their job, they're not on websites commenting on, you know, responding to these comments. And so I think they need to know that there's a political, you know, expediency in actually in welcoming foreign workers, right? So I think they need to hear that story, and I'm not sure if it's really being heard, or if there's a voice for that side of this debate.
Yeah. I would say, to support what he's saying, I call two of the employers in terms that do hire quite a fair amount of temporary foreign workers, and I think our MP needs to hear their story. Because, you're right, we need to present the positive aspect of temporary workers for our local economy, and how it impacts our local economy. And I think you're right, that message is a positive message, it needs to be heard. It's very easy to say, I was an immigrant myself, so I totally understand where it's coming from. And it's no piece of cake to go through the hoops. But I really think there is a lot of good in foreign workers.
Well, for sure. And I think if the program, if it's administered properly, there's lots of good. We've been doing this for, as I said, a decade. We never charge a foreign worker a dime for what we do. The employers pay us to recruit people from them. They don't care if they come from another part of Canada or another part of the world. When they get to the point where they're talking to us, they just need help finding people. And I think the message you need to make sure that the MP hears and understands is, is that it's not just always about the number of people, it's still a skills match, right? So if there aren't, if there aren't the right skill sets available to do the work, that you're still going to have a shortage. And in certain areas, you're going to have a shortage. And there has to be a way for employers to access programs that make sense, that are clear, and that aren't just going to be changing every other day. So I think that that's what they have to, they can't, you need to understand that the government shouldn't have knee-jerk reactions to things. They should really analyze things and look at it based on what the market's dictating, not just what they're hearing, and not just one story that they hear about a worker being treated poorly in B.C. Again, when a worker's treated poorly by an employer, that's not an immigration problem, that's an employment standards problem. And I think that's the message they have to hear.
Yeah. And I really agree with what he's saying, and also believe that the policy the way it has been instituted at a federal level does not fit the requirement of each province. So in Alberta, we have different needs.
Exactly.
Than Ontario may have, or Saskatchewan, or whatever. And I really do not feel that the policy that has been designed took that into consideration.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree. The broad brush approach, I think. Canada's quite diverse. It's a massive country, and from industry to industry, to location to location. I would also add too that I think missing in this, I think if you tried to say that we live in a global economy, and maybe part of the, you know, what's missing in this discussion is, we benefit from exporting our goods internationally. So there's, and also moving our people internationally. I also practice a lot in the United States where we move Canadians to the United States. And Canada benefits from that, Canadians benefit from that. So we've seen situations where the investment opportunities have, in Alberta, have become less attractive. One, because of the instability. I think people don't like to see everything changing all the time. Investors just don't like that. So they move capital smart, so they move it offshore, they go elsewhere. And just the cost of labor and the whole labor piece, if they can't provide the labor, then they'll look at other markets where they can find labor. And so it's a much more nuanced issue, I think, than what kind of makes it to the public airways, unfortunately.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to ask a question, but first of all, I wanted to say, as an example for our mayor, tell some of these temporary foreign workers, if they do it right and they get the residency, they could become mayor of a small town.
Even with a sick accent.
That's excellent. I agree.
I guess one of the concerns I've had for many years is the us and them scenario that happens in our country. I came from southern Ontario, I've been here for 40-plus years, but I still see this us and them thing with Quebec. Now, you said that Quebec was, that they're not going to be affected, as the rest of the provinces. How is that? Did they not get the changes that we're going to go through? Did they say, Quebec, you're exempted from these things?
Boy, that's a, now you're taking me back to my U of L days in political science. But that's a pretty broad question.
I went to U of L too.
It's a constitutional issue there. Yeah, it doesn't impact Quebec, it's as simple as that. The changes that they made, if you read the legislation, it doesn't affect Quebec. Am I missing something?
Yeah, but part of it is because Quebec is lobbying so strongly to, with the federal government, and for whatever reason, the federal government has acquiesced, or has agreed to those changes. So the immigration rules for Quebec are different.
He served in mission there, you see how quick he is.
But, no, but the rules are different. So Alberta, B.C., and some provinces had a few exceptions. And so when they came out with this immigration overhaul beginning of the summer, they wiped those away. And so I think what our-
Except for Quebec.
Except for Quebec, that's right. And so-
I'm not afraid to say it. You're my vice friend in Canada, so.
You know, and so what we need to do is we have to have, you know, our premier actually needs to be able to lobby the federal government to be able to do something. But he also needs to have, to help him have the political will to do that, he needs to hear the voices of people saying, we actually want this. We're not saying flood the gays and open the doors to everyone. Again, it's what he wants, but he needs to hear that, in Alberta, we need a separate, different solution than what we think of it.
One size doesn't fit all.
100%.
That's right.
Even within the provinces.
That's right. So the $24.23 per hour number that you used, is it basically any amount underneath of that now you're not going to be able to bring in foreign workers? Is that-
No, 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 not at all. No, it's going to be, there's more restrictions if you're below, so what they've done is they've divided it into low pay and high pay. Now, they still have the skilled and low skilled, so you're still, like, that's, skilled gives you more opportunities for residency. The low pay and high pay scenario is they created medians in each province, and it's based on the wages of the province. In Alberta, it's $24.23 an hour. So if you fall below that, if your position falls below that, then they're restricting, they're going to restrict the amount of time the work permit will be issued out of the gate. They're going to also have a cap on the amount of foreign workers you can have. So if you're an employer with six employees, I don't know how they're going to determine that one, because you're going to be down to 10%. So it's going to be 10%. So you can have 0.6.
0.6 of a person.
0.6 of a person. No, no, they'll allow one. But, no, there is, there's a cap, there's some other things. So you're going to have to jump through some more hoops. Further, what you said, Mayor, you'll be jumping through some more hoops if you're below that. And the worker's not going to have as easy a time to kind of navigate through this and get that residency piece in place, because they're going to be subject to a new LMIA and a new program every year. And then a cap as to how long they can be here as well. So.
So one-year work permits, so that I think they have to pay $1,000 every year, capped at four years. So, and they have to leave the country for four years if they ever want to come back to work.
All right. Thanks for your service. See you in four years.
So, tell me that again. $1,000 per year for four years?
$1,000 per worker, and they have to apply every year. If it's below $24.23 an hour, they will apply every year. If it's about $24.23 an hour, they'll be issued a two-year work permit. So they've got the opportunity to go, every two years, they've got to do it. There's still going to be a restriction on how long they can be here, but the mentality behind that is that if you give them four years, you're giving them time to get on a stream to residency, whether it be through a provincial nomination or a candidate experience class. You're giving them an opportunity to seek residency in that four years. But if they're low skilled, and they're in that low wage realm, you're really kind of, they become lone labor, because they are up against it. Their employer's going to have to jump through a lot of hoops every year to get them approved to stay, and then after four years, it's going to be, thanks very much. We've really enjoyed your time in Canada, but you're not welcome back here for another 48 months.
So it becomes very expensive for the employer, who has to go through the legal, and have to pay the legal fee every year in order to make sure the papers are filled properly.
Well, yeah, it becomes very, very difficult for the employer, because they have to have their advertising place, they've got to be able to demonstrate. It is a constant demonstration to Service Canada that you're doing everything you can to hire Canadians. And they want to make sure that you're not having this foreign worker working in place of a Canadian, which is admirable. Like, it makes sense, it does make sense. But you also got to understand that business still has to run. And you can't all of a sudden say to a business that's relying on margins and different things, okay, well, every year, you're going to have to jump through these new hoops. If you're going to do that, then you better make sure those hoops aren't changing all the time, because then it just gets even more tricky. Right?
Yeah.
I think your colleague here has stood up, and he wants to say something.
Yeah, he's politically correct.
Keep me in the background.
He's a farm boy from down here, he grew up down this way.
Governments can be arrogant and say, this is the rules of conduct that we're forcing you to follow, or demanding that you follow. But what they cannot change is a businessperson's plans. And we've had our clients who have plans of 100,000 square foot warehouse, will hire a few hundred more people, because he cannot get workers, that plan is now in Kansas City. And that they have no control over. And the foreign workers that have come in that are skilled are the people we want in the country that build the country. They have skills. Companies don't come to us to pass thousands of dollars if they could hire somebody.
If an ad in the paper's going to produce enough people to hire people, then clearly they're not going to jump through those, like, they're not going to go through those things. And it's, yeah, it can be very disheartening when the government starts running our businesses. That's a concern. It's a great concern.
And affect the bottom line by so doing.
Clearly. And so I think the important message here is that we have to be welcoming to these foreign workers. We have to treat them well, we have to have a plan in place when they get here. We got to make sure that there's a strategy to keep them here, if that's what they so desire. And the employers, the employees in the community at large has to work together to do that. And you got to make sure, as town council, that, you know, there's nothing bad happening here on your watch, right? So you're going to make sure that if you have employers that are doing, you know, shady things, then we're going to weed those guys out and make sure that they pay the price, right? And that's the important part. We don't just have a knee-jerk reaction and change the program because someone's not doing it properly. Right?
One of the problems we have here is, our biggest export is people. You can find people from seven, nine players all over the world.
My entire community is Cardston. So it's a chaperone, Cardston.
Yeah. And the problem is, in order to attract industry, we need people. And, you know, a lot of them don't need fully skilled people. But when you, most people coming here aren't willing to work for minimum wage. These people are quite happy to work for a minimum wage, because it's far better than what they can get at home.
It's a challenge in our country. I spoke at a truck driving conference recently, and you asked by, you asked a bunch of truck driving executives, and you say, and they all grew up in the trade. How many of you grew up in the truck driving trade? Every hand goes up. How many of you have children and grandchildren? Almost every hand goes up. How many of you encourage children and grandchildren to be truck drivers? Not one hand goes up. So we've done, you know, within, I have five children, and, you know, I'm two in school now, in post-secondary, one's graduated, but they, you know, we're encouraging them to, you know, get their advanced diplomas and then go get a white-collar job somehow, right? So I think it's important that we have to relook the way we do things. And that is the longer-term picture, but I think we also have to, we have to address what's going on here today. And you're not just going to solve that by saying, okay, we're going to get more kids in trade school, we're going to encourage them to do that. We've created this, there's only 32 million of us in this country. There's that many in Los Angeles. So we have to remember, we don't have a lot of people to draw on, and we don't border a developing country. If President Obama could wave a magic wand, and every Mexican was out of the U.S. tomorrow, your service industries, your agriculture industry, your construction industry, I can keep going, would be in a lot of trouble.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it very, very much.
It's my pleasure. This is exactly how I envisioned it, so I'm so happy to be here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. And that ends our regular meeting, and we're going to close our meeting. We have a motion.
We'll move to go to camera.
Motion going to camera. All over. Okay. Thank you, media, for coming, appreciate it, and we'll excuse you. And we'll have a five-minute recess.